Deputy Warden McPhail.
You're muted Duncan.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin. Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jaeger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Yes, one absent, motion carried.
Thank you. Next we need a motion to move with the committee of the whole. Mover and second or please.
I'll move it French.
Moved by French, second or?
Jaeger, I'll second.
Second by Jaeger, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin. Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jaeger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Eight in favor, one absent, carried.
Thank you. Next we have report to the council. This is on the Warden's report on the COVID-19. The COVID-19 pandemic has overwhelmed the healthcare system in several countries across the world. The number of cases in Canada continue to grow exponentially. Ontario has been reporting new cases averaging four to 500 per day. Elgin County continues to work closely with our local and senior health authorities to curb the spread of the COVID-19 virus and our local health case count continues to grow slowly. According to Southwestern Public Health, we have not seen strong evidence of a peak in cases of the southwestern public health region. Elgin, St. Thomas and Oxford. Our doubling time for the new cases has slowed, suggesting that public health measures are working. It's important to recognize that changes to testing guidelines will impact the curve. As more individuals in the community are tested, we anticipate there will be more confirmed cases, particularly ones that have not previously gone undetected. Significant changes have been made to the number of county processes and services in response to COVID-19. In an effort to ensure the safety of the public and staff, we are in extraordinary times and as a result of extraordinary measures are being taken. We continue to meet with southwestern public health on a daily basis and our county emergency operations center meet on a weekly basis. The chief administrative officer and emergency management team meet daily and I am in a regular contact with our CIO. Communications to the public continues to be a priority and have issued a number of COVID-19 press releases. I would like to acknowledge the tremendous work that is underway in Elgin's three long-term care homes. A number of actions have been taken to protect our staff and residents from COVID-19 and our homes and administration staff continues to be engrossed in COVID-19 planning. The homes have had tremendous ongoing support from all departments within the county, programming teams and fervently working to support and keeping the residents engaged while in isolation and ensuring they remain connected to their loved ones in various ways, including letters and virtual interaction. A number of compassionate and fact-based communications have been issued to residents, staff and families. With recent changes to in-person visits with the long-term care homes, additional administrative staff have been deployed to each home to field phone calls and questions from family members, friends and suppliers. All homes have a drop box in place at the front entrance where friends and family members can leave letters for the loved ones living in our homes. It has been wonderful to see the community relay their support of Elgin frontline workers. We have seen this through the donation of personal protective equipment as well as the support of staff and local businesses, flower shops and restaurants. On behalf of county council, chocolate was sent to all home staff over the prolonged weekend. Our frontline workers are to be commended for their support of our 247 residents. Elgin County Economic Development Department has been reaching out to businesses to gather data on the number of closures as well as the impact the crisis has on their businesses. Amid the COVID-19 crisis, staff from across the organization have found new suppliers and sources for critical items needed by frontline healthcare workers. By protecting ourselves, our staff and community as much as possible, we are doing our part to stem the transmission of this virus. I would like to remind residents to continue to strictly adhere to physical distancing guidelines, stay at home if possible. By taking personal responsibility, we are not only protecting ourselves and our families, we are also supporting our community. Thank you. Any questions on my report? Seeing none, motion to receive and file? Mover and second or please?
Moved by Marks.
Moved by Marks, second by Jones. All those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin. Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jaeger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden. Eight in favor, one absent, motion carried.
Thank you. Is Alan there?
Good morning, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead Al.
This is recognizing to adapt or pivot the wrong. Doing this in fact from close economic operation assist the obvious developing a COVID-19 grant program. This grant program will be implemented to help local business owners with pivoting the business model in the areas, for example, to create an online presence, to enhance their marketing. It might even to enhance the digital marketing. The COVID-19 would be administered by SPECT and also provide up to $2,000 per business. Now, the role of the county's economic development department would be to promote program and to assist in reviewing and approving the applications. Presently with the city SPECT and the downtown board of management in St. Thomas, there's $40,000 in the fund. Economic development staff is recommending that the county match city's contribution of $15,000. That they're development department's budget. As some programs are being scaled back due to the current pandemic. However, given that there already money is allocated in the Elgin Centers program to help local businesses specifically, $15,000 could be allocated to SPECT though having a damaging effect on the Elgin Centers program. Now, I do need to stress that the county can't change the amount of funding it provides in program. The county's role is to administer and fund the program, all at council's discretion. The Elgin Center CIP is not a statutory for the county. Now, council did decide to fund the COVID-19 visitor development fund from the Elgin Centers program. This will be about 108,000 distributed over the next three intake dates. As of this morning, just to note, we've actually had six applications for the main intake intake date and we're expecting there are two applications during this crisis, the Elgin program still remains popular. There's two recommendations before council this morning. One is to receive and file and the other one is that $15,000 be transferred from the economic development department's 2020 operating budget to SPECT to be included as the county's financial contribution to the COVID-19 visitor development fund as described in April 20 reports submitted by GM of Economic Development. And welcome any questions this morning from council. Thank you.
Thank you Al. Questions for Al on his report?
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions and first off, I think it's a, it's a great program. I just wanted to clarify, in the requirements of the program, there's a note to, mentions to attend monthly mentor meetings. So I'm assuming that can be done over the phone or electronically and I don't know if that should be specified?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, a good point. That would be through a web Zoom or a Webex, but I will bring that to attention of the SPECT and will requirement to be more clear. Thank you.
A couple of follow-ups, just the, there's another requirement to say that they cannot be a current participant in any other provincial programs. And I'm wondering if that's realistic in this context, I think for, or am I understanding correctly that in order to get this 2,000, I would be foregoing any other kind of business support?
I will have to clarify that with SPECT to bring to your attention. It's my understanding that you could stack programs, but I will clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, because under the circumstances, I think we'll, we'll need to allow businesses to access multiple sources or multiple programs and not to, not to stack too much, but just different types of program. And last little comments was in the, in the questionnaire, it says, will this create jobs? And I think right now it could also be the criteria or the question would be, would this retain jobs? Existing jobs and that would be interesting to know as well.
I will make that addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Al?
I have, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead Duncan.
Alan, are applicants that are coming in regarding these, these programs, are you finding that these applicants have applied in the past and have been recipients of county money in the past? Or are these new people that are the first time to Elgin County?
It's my understanding that the inquiries that SPECT have been receiving of what have been newer businesses approaching the county for the first time or SPECT for the first time. So it'll be interesting to see if we do receive applications from businesses who have accessed programs previously. But my understanding is that consultations by SPECT have been businesses that are new to approaching our programs.
You know, I, I really think that it's something that we, we as best as our, the best that we can to spread this around to as many different businesses in the county as we can. I'd be disappointed to see the same people coming back to the well because they figured out to dip the water out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Al?
Dave, just letting you know that I finally got in.
Oh, good. Good morning Sally.
Good morning.
Julie, do we need two motions on this? One to receive and then one for the 15,000?
It's just a combined motion, your worship.
Okay. So there's a recommendation by staff, because I have a mover and second or please?
Moved by McPhail.
Moved by McPhail, second or?
Jaeger, I'll second it.
Jaeger, all those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jaeger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Alan, you're doing the next one on job sites?
Yes. The report for council this morning provides an update on economic development staff work on the job site challenge. Staff have worked closely with the township of Southold, which enabled the Ford Motor Company to submit a complete application to the challenge. Next steps are the province will review the submit application to determine if the site meets the program's eligibility requirements. If eligible, the Ford lands will be assessed against the criteria and will be ranked according to how well the site meets the challenge's objectives. Now, it should be stressed that only the top three sites in Ontario will be put forward for consideration as a mega site. Now, the application's submission date has been extended due to COVID-19 and this extension has given staff the opportunity to entertain more submissions to the challenge and a private landowner, landowner in Central Elgin has an interest in submitting their lands as a possible site. So presently, I'm working with Central Elgin to research it a bit further and hopefully we can have those lands also be part of the challenge. So the recommendation for council this morning is to receive and file.
Thank you Al. Questions for Al on job site report?
Yes, Mr. Warden, Ed Ketchibah. Through you to Al. I would assume that once staff have made the determination on the second site, you'd be coming forward to council asking for their endorsement at that time and perhaps you can reveal some more information as to who and where?
Bring forward the, the, the information to council. Now, at the January council meeting, the way the recommendation was structured that gave opportunities for letters of recommendation to be completed by for all landowners that submitted their application. But I can certainly bring forward more information regarding the applicant if they decide to go through with it. Yes.
Any other questions for Al? Hearing none, motion to receive and file please? Mover and second or?
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, second or?
Martin. Martin.
Standing by Martin, all those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jaeger.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchibah.
Yep.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Next we have library report. Natalie, you're doing that one?
Yes, me am. Thank you, Mr. Warden. So thank you, Mr. Warden and through you to county council. This morning we'll be discussing Elgin County libraries 2019 annual usage trends within the context of a five-year analysis from 2015 to 2019, both for the library system as a whole and across the 10 branches. The report that you have before you is comprised of quantitative data that we track monthly and/or annually as well as qualitative data specifically in section six that is gathered by survey methods during a three-month period yearly. I'm just going to share a presentation with you. Okay, so this qualitative data is gathered through a free program called Project Outcome, which is supported by the Public Library Association. Project Outcome uses simple customer surveys to help libraries measure outcomes to assess the library's impact on its communities. So in the interest of time, I will be highlighting six of the eight sections of this particular report. So the first section is total use. So this particular section demonstrates how residents of the county of Elgin are physically and virtually using our library space. Library usage can be divided into two categories. Physical transactions that are performed within a library branch, which is library use, and online actions that are available both inside and outside of the library, which is electronic use. In library use is comprised of measures including physical circulation, computer use, holds placed in branch and program attendance. Electronic use is comprised of measures including electronic circulation, virtual visits or catalog sessions, wireless sessions or Wi-Fi and holds placed online. So this particular graph shows that the library's total usage has had a small decline of 0.2% between 2018 and 2019. However, the library's total use has increased by 4.3% between 2015 and 2019. This graph also shows that in library use continues to make up the majority of the total usage within our library system. As you can see, the library has had a small decline in in library use between 2018 and 2019. A decrease of 2.4% is visible. We are also seeing a growing percentage of electronic use within the library's total use. Over a two-year period, electronic activities have increased by 2.4%. Over a five-year period, electronic usage has increased by 12.8%. The next section is overall circulation. So this particular section highlights two and five-year borrowing trends for physical and electronic circulation. So this section differs from the first section and then in that this particular section focuses solely on circulation. This particular graph shows how the circulation of the library's physical materials continues to make up the majority of the checkouts within our system. As you can see, the library has had a small decline in the borrowing of physical materials between 2018 and 2019. A decrease of 3.8% is visible. We also see a growing interest in our online materials. Over a two-year period, electronic circulation has grown by 18.1%. Over a five-year period, electronic circulation has grown 78.1%. Similar to other public library systems, our physical collections continue to be well-used though they are experiencing a steady decline over time. We continue to evolve and adapt to meet our community needs. One way we are adapting is to offer expanded online services in the way of eBooks, e-audiobooks, e-magazines and online entertainment such as movies, TV shows and music. We are providing services such as Hoopla, Canopy, Overdrive and Libby and RB Digital and Flipster to our users. The next section is branch visits. This section displays the number of people visiting Elgin County branches per year. Our people counter units track the amount of foot traffic that enters the branches and provide traffic patterns over time. This graph shows year-over-year data between 2016 and 2019. Belmont was the last branch to install a people counter unit after the completion of a branch renovation in July of 2016. As a result, no data is tracked for Belmont in the 2016 year. However, this graph shows an increase in Belmont branch visits by 7.9% between 2017 and 2019. Also evident is a 9.6 increase in Dutton branch visits between 2016 and 2019 as well as a 29.4 increase in Chedden branch visits between 2016 and 2019. The next section is programs. This section displays the number of programs and tours offered per year as well as the number of active participants. Library staff are continuously changing their programs to engage with their communities at their branches. Using Project Outcome, we measure and assess the success of our programs so we can continue to build successful programs for the public. The average number of people attending each program has increased by 13.7% between 2015 and 2019. This graph shows that the number of programs and tours that the library offers has increased by 4.4% since 2015 while attendance at programs has increased by 18.7% since 2015. The library surveyed the topic of early childhood literacy to participants of library programs at branches. This focused survey measures the impact of services designed to improve early literacy and learning skills and to prepare children ages zero to five to succeed in school. This slide and graph shows an overview of the program participants' responses to a particular statement using the Likert scale. This is to measure their level of agreement or disagreement with that particular statement. This graph shows that on average across the 10 library branches, 49.5% of the people who attended this program strongly agree that they will spend more time interacting with their children, which is reading, talking, singing, writing and playing after the program. It also shows that 46.9% agreed that they would spend more time interacting with their children, which is reading, talking, singing, writing and playing after the program. This next slide shows an overview of the program participants' responses to an open-ended question in the survey, which was, what did you like most about the program? These responses show that people liked a variety of different items the most about the program, including singing and musical instruments, interacting with other children and encouraging the kids to participate and be comfortable enough to be themselves. Section five is technology use. This section shows how library members are using library computers versus wireless internet networks at library branches. This graph shows how internet use in the library branches is increasingly made up of wireless sessions. As you can see, wireless usage continues to grow and has increased between 2015 and 2019. An increase of 61.5% is visible. As wireless usage increases, computer usage in the library branches is steadily declining at an average rate of 3% per year. Section six, library membership. This section displays a four-year trend for new members and members actively using library services. So here we are measuring two types of membership. Library members or active members are customers who have used a library service within a two-year period. While new registrations are customers who have signed up for a library account within the 2019 calendar year. The number of active library members has been trending downwards over the past few years, including in 2019, with a slight decrease of 0.2%. The library also saw a 13% decrease in new library registrations in 2019. And lastly, this slide is regarding the library's response to COVID-19. This slide shows four responses from community members using the county of Elgin's new live chat service. These messages from library users show that even though the library's branch service, spaces and staff are greatly missed by families, the library's virtual library and digital products, including Culture grams, Canopy and Overdrive, which are mentioned in these messages, are greatly valued by members during this time. Also, in reference to the third quote, our relationship with St. Thomas Public Library has remained strong throughout the pandemic, including supporting our reciprocal borrowing agreement for our library members and participating in PPE 3D printing efforts together. We also look forward to continuing our interlibrary loan partnership with St. Thomas Public Library post-pandemic. During this time, Elgin County Library has been able to stay vibrant and valuable to community members by pivoting to new ways of offering products and services, and also supporting members through their new or different virtual library experience. At a time when families are self-isolating and staying home, the library has responded by increasing our digital eBook and e-audio book collections, enhancing our education e-resources, and offering more online entertainment apps and services. The library is also offering online virtual library card registration in order to get members access to digital materials right away. This has in turn created an increase in library cardholders. Also, with the support of IT, library branches have been able to offer extended Wi-Fi ranges with library cardless access to keep our communities connected with not only critical services, but to each other. The recommendation is before you. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Natalie. Questions for Natalie on her report?
Mr. Warden, it's Dominique.
Go ahead, Dominique.
Thank you. Through you to the team, so congratulations on another successful year and a very detailed report, good data, good outcome-based measurements. So I think we're on the right track. And also, as an aside, kudos also to Brian and your team for the communication efforts during this pandemic and the creativity in terms of adapting services. So, well done, well done. And my questions/requests, I think that won't be a surprise, but as you know, I always see performance as something that is relative. So it's relative to your investment. So how much are you spending to get the results that you're getting? And how is that relative to your benchmarks in your sector, so compared to other libraries? So I would like to request a follow-up report, if possible, with that additional data. So what is your total cost, your cost per capita, your comparison of those costs per capita, and the results you're getting according to your industry and your sector? Are those the results that we should be expecting? So that would, I think, would really tell us how well you're performing. And as part of the request, I'm also looking for... So I don't know if you had set goals for 2019, and whether those results, then you can say, yes, we achieved our goal. So I don't recall whether you had shared that or you had set those, but I think it would be useful if you haven't done so already. And I don't know, under the current circumstances, it may not be possible, but at least to have targets, so that, again, when you report at this time next year, you could say, well, these were the targets. And even if you miss them, you'll be able to explain, here's why we missed them because of, you know, the current circumstances. But I think, having indicators relative to performance and goals and targets that you had set for yourself would also be beneficial. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Warden, to respond to the question, thank you very much, Counselor Jagair, for your comments. And we will prepare a follow-up report with more details in terms of performance indicators and targets. Thank you.
Mr. Warden, it's Counselor Jones.
Go ahead, Grant.
Through you to Natalie. Natalie, can you give an example of the wireless usage? The one chart with trending up, can you give me an example of that?
Yes, Mr. Warden, to respond to the question, let me just go back to that slide. Okay, so Mr. Warden, to respond to the question, so this is the slide in question. So the wireless usage here is that at branches, at the branch level. And to respond to the question, an example of this would be customers using the wireless usage at the branch. Were you looking for more information about the numbers, or?
So actually, they're just using the library's network to access the internet from their own...
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so it would be customers coming in with their own mobile devices and accessing the wireless internet. Now, at this current time, the Wi-Fi networks have been extended outside of the building, so customers are able to bring their own mobile devices and use the wireless network that way.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Warden, if I might further elaborate on that a little bit, because there's a point here that council needs to address it in. And that is, as well, as you're seeing, we're seeing the decline of what we call the public access computer usage. And in this place, wireless is increasing at a greater rate, which is going to afford us the opportunity to really look at our spaces regarding how we're deploying technology in the space and being able to utilize for things like programs as opposed to having public access computers. But nevertheless, we want to state that we do recognize that although hardware usage is declining in the branches, it's still pretty strong, and we have a lot of residents that still really rely on that. So it is a balance for us, but the increase we're seeing in wireless is going to continue. And we do need to look in the future to adapting our spaces to account for that type of usage, which is not static, just sitting at a computer.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions for either Natalie or Brian?
Warden, it's Sally, I'd like to speak.
Go ahead, Sally.
Yeah, I just want to commend Natalie on just the incredible programs that you're doing and looking at, you know, the things, how it's affecting children and families and their learning. I'm sure even myself, I've started to use the eBook because of this COVID thing rather than the physical library. So I expect you'll see great changes on next year's report. Thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Sally. Any other questions?
Tom Marks, just calling, a very impressive report, and I'd be happy to second it.
We haven't had a mover yet, but...
I thought Counselor Jagair did, but then I'd be happy to move it.
Okay. Moved by Mark, seconder?
Then I'll be happy to second it.
All right, Jagair, second it. All those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, motion carried.
Thank you, Julie. Brian, are you there for the next report? Brian Lima, are you there?
There we go. I am, Mr. Warden, thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
Through you to council. As part of the approved 2020 capital budget, tenders were advertising issues issued as the county's policy relates to the hot mix asphalt paving and micro-surfacing and surface treatment tenders. Tenders issued this year included roads under the ownership and jurisdiction of member municipalities which desire to participate. The county's component of the tenders detailed through these two tenders include 10 different capital projects. The recommendations are before you, as well as details of tender results. And the first recommendation, that Wamsley Brothers Limited be selected for the Hot Mix Asphalt Paving Project, tender 2020-T15, at a total price of $2,974,838, inclusive of contingency and exclusive of HST. And that Dunkore Enterprises Incorporated be selected for the micro-surfacing and surface treatment project, tender 2020-T16, at a total price of $691,820, inclusive of contingency allowance and exclusive of HST. And that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the contract. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on the bids? Hearing none, Julie. Do we do two motions on this, or can we do it under one?
It's combined, just as Brian relayed, so it's all one resolution, your worship.
Okay. Mover and second for the recommendation from Brian?
Martin, move.
Moved by Martin, seconder?
Jones.
Second by Jones, all in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Brian, you're doing the Wonderland Road?
I am.
Where's Mike? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Once again, through to county council. RFP 2019-33 was released in 2019 by the county in partnership with the MTO, which sought professional services from interested engineering firms to undertake an environmental assessment, study, and preliminary design to address the long-term transportation needs in the vicinity of Highway 3 and Rahm McNeil Line to provide an improved connection to Wonderland Road within the township of Southold. The Evaluation Committee, having used a quality-based selection process, thus recommends that the provision of engineering services associated with engineering services for Wonderland Road, Highway 3 environmental assessment study, and preliminary design services received from GHD Limited in the amount of $250,805, exclusive of HST be awarded, that the approval be conditional upon receipt of confirmation from the Ministry of Transportation that they concur with a selection consultant, that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the supporting engineering services agreement. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian on Wonderland Road?
Mr. Warden, this is Counselor Jones.
Go ahead.
I'd be more than happy to move this. This has been a long process, and I'm happy to see it's finally moving forward. So I will definitely move this one.
Okay, thanks, Grant. Any other questions?
Sally?
Go ahead, Sally.
I'm just wondering, Brian, if the Ministry of Transport are going to cover any of the costs. I'm just curious, because they did switch this, and I'm so glad, like Grant, to see this coming to fruition and hopefully going straight through instead of the 90-degree bend. But I just didn't know if the MTO were assuming any costs whatsoever, or if it is entirely ours.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Martin. Firstly, to address the last comment about the road going straight through, at this point, that would be presupposing an outcome, as the Evaluation Environmental Study will review all alternatives, and that certainly may be an option that will likely be explored. In terms of the funding commitment made by the ministry, they have a 50% cost sharing to undertake this assignment.
Any other questions for Brian? We have a mover by Jones, seconder?
Purcell.
Second by Purcell, all those in favor?
Deputy Warden McPhail. Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jagair.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine-zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Jim, you're doing the next one?
Yes, I am, Mr. Warden. This report is a cash flow analysis based on the impact of COVID-19. As you can imagine, trying to forecast in this period of uncertainty is extremely difficult, but it's also probably more important than ever to try and put together a forecast, even though any forecast we do will be flawed. As we gain experience, we'll be able to refine the forecast, and it'll be an iterative process where it'll continually become better, and it'll, by doing this process, we'll be able to situate ourselves hopefully well, so we can face the financial challenges that Elgin is encountering. At the end of March, we had $10 million of cash in the bank, and we had $18 million in investments. You'll remember that we've put money aside because of the Plantar's Lodge investment that is going to be beginning shortly, and hence, that gives us a little bit of flexibility at this point in time because of that cash reserve that we have. I'll take you through, next, the changes that we anticipate in the cash over the course of the year. Other things happening that are of major significance. One is the capital spending taking place. We have a forecast right now based on the approved capital budget of $34 million of capital expenditures this year. In comparison, we only have $16 million of cash coming in from our net income. That means that we have $18 million that we're going to be consuming incremental cash over the course of the year. That will be covered by cashing in investments of $14 million that are coming due this year. And then with the... We have some changes in accounts receivable, that'll be providing $3 million. That's a net shortfall of $1 million, which will mean that our $10 million that we currently have in cash will decrease to $19 million. As well, the $18 million that we currently have in investments will have cashed in $14 million, of that leaving $4 million in investments. Now fluctuations during the course of the year are almost normal, but they will be exacerbated by the crisis that we're undergoing right now. You'll see in the attached spreadsheet that there is a low period where we're at $5 million of cash is the low period during the year. So that is not at a point where we would need to take on debt this year. So it looks like if this forecast were to hold, that we would be able to continue on without incurring any debt over the course of the year. If we are, as I said, this is very difficult to forecast, so there could be deviations from this current forecast. If the cash did drop, we keep in mind that we do have $2 million currently available in the line of credit from the bank that we can draw upon for short-term needs. At the beginning of the year, council approved that the warden and myself can extend that to $15 million, that line of credit, if the need arises. And then lastly, if things got really bad with the pandemic, we also have the option of coming to council and asking for a pull ahead of the debt on Plantar's Lodge. You'll remember that we had $33 million of debt that we were planning, of $12 million of which we were going to take on in January of 2021. So if necessary, we could pull that ahead and start that a few months earlier if there was a really dire need for cash, because things really turned worse with this pandemic. So you have great flexibility, as I guess in summary, to weather the storm that we could potentially be facing if needed. Next, I'll take you through the forecast that we have on our performance to budget. And the first part that we did as staff was we looked at areas where we could achieve savings resulting from the pandemic, and what could we do to adjust service levels given that things aren't the same as they used to be? And we were able to achieve $200,000 in savings in libraries, emergency services, POA, and economic development. On the flip side, we're incurring incremental costs in the homes in particular because of the crisis, and that will be funded in this forecast by the province. We received $100,000 already in March, which will be using the next. And in addition, we're also supplementing that money that we're getting from the province by providing support using our salaried staff that we're redeploying to the homes. So we're providing the equivalent of about $30,000 of in-kind support from salaried people that would be normally doing other functions that have been redeployed to the homes. The biggest variability in this entire forecast relates to our inflow... The biggest variability in this entire forecast relates to our inflows from tax. Very difficult to predict how much of an impact it's going to be. But what we have right now in this forecast is that we will have delayed taxes of about $2 million starting in June. By the end of the year, this forecast has that money will be recovered, all of it except for a half million dollars, which we would then, we're putting in here, there'd be an increase in tax write-offs as a result of people not being able to pay their taxes. As I said, there's a lot of variability, and we know what, trying to guess what this number for tax write-offs is going to be is not. And I don't think anyone has a crystal ball on it, and it could obviously change dramatically based on whether we come out of this pandemic quickly or if things worsen. So we will revise the forecast as months go on based on as we learn more information. Lastly, flowing into the forecast, we had $100,000 of performance in the departments from some short staffing, which I'll cover in the next report. The sum of all that is that our current forecast is that we'll have a loss relative to budget or negative performance relative to budget of $200,000 on the full year. And in summary, that's predominantly driven by the tax write-offs, partially offset by the savings that we've achieved in numerous service areas. And the other thing to keep in mind, as I've discussed earlier, is that we will have variability in cash flow over the course of the year related to delays in tax coming in with delays of about $2 million in tax receipts that will have an impact on the cash flow. But despite that, we believe that we can do this without incurring debt. But if needed, we have the line of credit for any short-term cash issues, and if it becomes really significant, we can always pull ahead the Terrace Lodge debt that we had planned for January and pull that ahead by a few months. The report is before you, and the recommendation is that it be received and filed.
Thank you, Jim. Question for Jim on cash flow?
Yes, it's Bob Purcell. I think I know the answer, but Jim may be able to confirm the $4 per hour combat pay that will be flowing through the homes in particular. Is that a straight flow-through where the province will give us additional for the homes, and then we just flow that through?
As of yesterday, I still don't know the answer to whether that's going to be a payment directly to the employees or whether it's a payment to us, and then we pay the employees. And that is not included within this forecast right now, and if it was, it would be both an increase in revenue and an increase in cost, so it would be neutral.
Any other questions for Jim? Hearing none, there's a recommendation before you to receive and file, mover and seconder.
Mr. Warden, if I could just interject, we need two separate motions, one to receive and file the cash flow report, and one to receive and file the March performance report.
Okay, on the cash flow, mover and seconder, please.
I'll move it, French.
Moved by Ketchba, second by French. All in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Giger?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions on the budget performance or any additions, Jim?
No, no further additions.
Okay, questions for Jim on the budget performance? Jim, there is going to be a conference call with the mayors with the MP and the MPPs. I know the Canadian Federation of Municipalities are pressuring both levels of government to increase funding to to the municipalities to combat our extra expenses on the COVID-19. What's your feeling on that?
In terms of the likelihood of our success of getting incremental dollars?
No, I mean, right now, we're looking at potentially $200,000. Are we looking at, I mean, it's crystal balling, I know, potentially by the end of the year, what are we looking at?
Well, one, it's going to depend on how long the continues. So the number of months will have an impact on it. And then it will also have, depending on whether or not we have an outbreak in the homes or the home or not, will also have an impact on how much money we would require. So those are the big variables and the unknowns that can dramatically, you know, make that number grow by, say, five times if things really go sideways.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Any other questions for Jim on the budget performance? Mover and seconder on budget performance, please.
Martin moved.
Moved by Martin.
McPhail, second.
Second by McPhail on favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin? Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Giger?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Next one is the billing rate. Julie, are you doing this or Steve?
I'd be happy to, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
Thank you through you to members of County Council. The memorandum of understanding for legal services was reviewed for consideration of increases in billing rates. The rate of the county solicitor was increased in 2019 with the understanding that it would not be increased in 2020, and rather, on an alternating basis, the county solicitor rate increase and the following year, the county prosecutor rate increase. So the rate for the county prosecutor was not increased last year with the understanding that we would increase it this year. The billing rate for the previous county prosecutor/solicitor had the incumbent remained in that position. He was, as you'll recall, a barely junior lawyer, was anticipated to increase to $125 per hour. Given the higher qualifications and experience of Mr. Jack Huber, I now recommend to council that we increase the billing rate for the county prosecutor/solicitor to $140 an hour. There are two recommendations before you. One is that you authorize an increase in the billing rate for the county prosecutor to $140 per hour, and that the chief administrative officer be directed to send notification of this increase to the City of St. Thomas and Elgin's local municipal partners. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for increase of rate?
Marks, I'd like to move it, please.
Moved by Marks, second.
Ketchba.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Giger?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you, Julie. You're doing the next one on service delivery review.
With your consent, Mr. Warden, I'll ask that Carolyn Cron, our Legislative Services Coordinator, cover that report.
Okay. Carolyn, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council, the service delivery review timeline has been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, and a number of critical service area reviews, focus groups, and conversations with leaders have not been possible, particularly within the county's free long-term care homes. However, the chief administrative officer and myself continue to hold weekly strategy meetings with Strategy Corps, and adjustments are being made to the project schedule weekly to ensure work on the service delivery review continues. The recommendation is that the report be received and filed, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Caroline. Questions for Taylor on the service delivery? I completely understand why it might be delayed a little bit, especially with the homes. They are so busy right now. Any questions?
Mr. Warden?
Go ahead.
Just wondering if there's been any communication from the ministry as to whether deadlines would be extended?
I can take that question through you, Mr. Warden, to Councillor Giger. So I know that this is something that is currently being discussed by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. However, so far, the dates remain the same. So the original extended deadline from June to September remains in place until further notice. So we continue to work towards those timelines, anticipating, or at least we're hopeful that we may have a bit of breathing space extended to us by the province, but haven't received that notification as of yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, mover and seconder for the report by Caroline.
Purcell.
Moved by Purcell, seconder. Second by Jones, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell? Councillor Martin? Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Giger?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have correspondence. And there is five pieces of correspondence. Anyone wish to make comment or endorse?
Sally?
Go ahead, Sally.
I just wanted to mention the Elgin OPP report. We have found as a board, they are just phenomenal, what the work they've done, and Brad Fishley has been an excellent detachment commander, and of course, was supposed to retire here in April, but is staying on till June at the moment, trying to keep us or work us through this pandemic, and the reports they give us, et cetera, have been just very enlightening, and we very much appreciate all the work the OPP do. I know it's a costly service, but it is a very vital service, and they have had a lot of success in finding thefts and such this year. So I just wanted to note that we very much appreciate them.
Thank you for that, Sally. Any other questions on the correspondence?
Mr. Warden, Tom Marks, if I may.
Go ahead, Tom.
Just it's hard to believe that ten years since the Palm match, and actually, three or four years before that, when we started talking about it, you and I were both on County Council at the time, so probably a tip of the hat, Deputy Mayor or Deputy Ward McPhail for all his hard work. A lot of fun.
Thanks for that, Tom. Any other questions? Motion to receive and file the correspondence, items one through five or one through six, whatever it was. Mover and seconder. Moved by Martin, second by Ketchba, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Giger? Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you. Other business, state inquiries by members. Notice of motion. Matters of urgency? Seeing none, we do have a closed session, and there's, I'll give you the reasoning for the closed section in a second here. Closed meeting, be resolved that we do now proceed in a closed meeting in accordance with Municipal Act, discussed under Municipal Act 239-2. Item one, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality of local boards. Number two, the security of property of the municipality of local boards. Three, four, and five are a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiated carry-on or to be carried on by behalf of the municipality of local boards. And number six, personnel matter by identifying individual including municipal or local board employees. So mover and seconder to move into closed session.
Sorry, if I may, just, Mr. Warden, we did have one matter of urgency.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'd like to request then an item be added to the closed meeting agenda under Municipal Act 239-2C, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board for property number 1342961 Ontario to discuss a lease.
Okay, thank you, Julie. As amended, can I have a mover and seconder move into closed session, please?
Giger, I'll move.
Moved by Giger, seconder.
Jones.
Second by Jones, all those in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail? Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French?
Yes.
Councillor Giger?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba? Mr. Warden? Nine zero, motion carried.
Thank you, Julie. We'll have a five-minute recess while we get prepared to go into closed session, so if everybody can come back in about five minutes. Thank you.
Councillor Giger?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, motion is carried.
Do you need additional time to come back into open session, Julie?
We're now in open session.
Okay. All right, we need a motion to adopt the recommendations of committee of the whole.
Sorry.
Item number one, Julie.
So these are the rise in reports coming out of closed session. So for item number one, that Elgin County Council approve a two-year lease between the corporation of the County of Elgin and 1342961 Ontario Incorporated for suite number 313 located at 450 Sunset Drive in St. Thomas for the period of May 1st, 2020 to April 30th, 2022, and that the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer be authorized to execute the lease.
Thank you, Julie. Mover and seconder for the recommendation?
I'll move it, Martin.
Moved by Martin, seconder.
Seconded, French.
Ketchba, all those in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Purcell?
Yes.
Councillor Martin?
Yes.
Councillor Marks?
Yes.
Councillor Jones?
Yes.
Councillor French? Councillor Giger?
Yes.
Councillor Ketchba?
Yes.
And Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. Item number two, the Riddell lease.
So the motion before you is that council approve a lease amending agreement before the corporation of the County of Elgin as landlord and Mervyn Riddell as tenant, and for the term commencing May 1st, 2020 and ending May 30th, 2021, and that council authorize the Warden and Chief Administrative Officer to execute the said lease amending agreement on behalf of the corporation of the County of Elgin.
Giger, I'll move.
Moved by Giger, seconder.
Marks.
Second by Marks, all in favor. Second by Marks, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, motion carried.
All right, number three, to be.
That staff proceed as directed.
Motion. Second.
Ketchibah.
Mark.
Like, ah, by Martin, on favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yeah.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yeah.
Nine zero, motion is carried.
Thank you. All right, for, taken.
Uh, that staff be directed to send a letter to Elgin County's partner municipalities and the county of Middlesex formally inviting them to participate in the joint renewal of the contract for integrity commissioner and closed meeting investigator with independent resolutions incorporated commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-one and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Mover, seconder, please. Purcell. Move all second. McPhail, second, all those in favor. Yeah.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden. Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Number five.
Uh, that staff proceed as directed.
Mover. Jones.
Jiguer.
By Jones. Second by, on favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Okay, number six, why rate, we don't need a motion?
Just a motion that the verbal report from the chief administrative officer be received.
Okay, mover, seconder for number six.
Marks.
Move by Mark, seconder. All in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. By bylaws.
Motion to adopt uh recommendations from committee of the whole, Mr. Warden.
Oh. Motion to adopt the recommendations from committee of the whole. Mover.
I'll move it, French.
Right, seconder. Catcher Bob. There, please.
Catcher Bob.
All in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yeah.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you. Bylaw.
Uh, be it a first, second and third read of bylaw twenty dash twenty-two being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting.
Thank you, mover and seconder, please. Move by Martin, seconder.
Jones.
Second. Joe.
Joe.
Second by Jones, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail. Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba.
Yes.
And Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Thank you, Julie. Any other bylaws?
No.
Okay, any uh question? Readjourn. No, I guess, motion for adjournment, please.
Purcell.
Mover and seconder.
Marks.
Second by Marks, all in favor.
Deputy Warden McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Purcell.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yeah.
Counselor Marks.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
Counselor French.
Yes.
Counselor Jiguer.
Yes.
Counselor Ketchiba.
Yes.
Mr. Warden.
Yes.
Nine zero, the motion is carried.
Everybody stay healthy. We will see everybody in uh with their next one. E O C. Have we got a time and a date?